And what incentives is all about is a whole bunch of them, they're going to go through. But every time we have, you get a prospect that's close, I mean, really, really serious, they start checking and seeing what you can do for them. Are you going to hook the utilities up? You don't put the utilities into the site and just a whole bunch of things. And they're important, but they're not all required. And so, oh, I think Pam, she's chairman of this committee that's been working with us for quite a while and have several meetings. It just kind of go down the list of things that we think might be possible here and explaining how we can handle them or who don't want to handle them or whatever. They are important. I read this the other day where a company moved 24 miles, a very large company, and it moved 24 miles because this city gave something to this city. So, they are important. Some of them are small, some of them are large, but are you going to moderate, you going to turn over to Terry?
Well, I just, I thank you for coming. And I think the mayor requests that we do these sessions every quarter, and I think they've been very beneficial, so I appreciate you guys coming and allowing us to sit down and chat with you again. I reiterate what Kent said, it's very important. I know on a much, much larger scale, you guys hear a sports franchise is moving all the time because one community offered incentives, or wasn't able to, that's on a totally different level than what we're talking about here. But we do, even in our community, want to be competitive with other communities around us to recruit businesses. And so, we relied heavily on Terry's expertise and other readings that we've been doing in our committee and came up with a list of possibilities of incentives. I think Terry has the list, and we're going to let Terry do mostly talking about this list because he's probably the most educated, as far as I'm concerned in the room, about these individual incentives that we can. Front page, you'll see lists of incentives that we think are possibilities for Cameron. There's also bottom line of other things that we may not have thought of, because we're always looking at suggestions. And then on the back page are some things that we're not really bringing to the table at this time, but other communities do do those, so we thought we'd just show you some of the others, send you through any web top or list that other communities use. So, on that note, Terry, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Pam. Thanks for Kent, Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for having me do this and also for being here, appreciate that. As Pam stated, these are incentives that are used considerably throughout the state of Arizona throughout the United States, really. And some of them are very, very applicable to here, some are not used very often. You probably won't ever find a project that has all of these involved because some of them are, overlap each other, you can pick the best one of the two. One of the things that I need to do when we have a prospect comes in, they give you a whole list of questions, and it may be a page worth of questions, it may be 20 pages worth of questions, and you have to fill that out to even be in consideration. Incentives are always on the first go around. If you don't fill out the incentives and tell them what you have possible, best way to say it is you're in trash can. And that's really where you end up. It's that way with all the questions, actually. Incentives are one thing, you know, as you go forward. Now, you'll read at places, I always love it because I'm always a professor, not to put down a professor, but it seems to always be the one who writes the story. You'll read where they'll say the incentives aren't important, that they're not a deciding factor. I've been doing this since 1989. I have yet to ever receive a prospect that in the first five, six questions, unless they're in a different type of order, that incentives are not asked for. When they come to visit, it's within the top three usually, three questions that are asked. So, it is very important to them. Will make a bad deal a good deal for a company? No, we don't want that either. We get a company, we want them to have a good deal because we want them to be here, it wouldn't be happy. It won't make a, as I stated, it won't make a bad deal a good deal. But if you're in the running and it is a good deal, it's the cherry that tops the cake off. So, if we can, I'll start. Feel free to interrupt me at any time with a question, or you can write down an ask letter, wherever you'd like to be. These are the incentives that are needed to, truthfully, to be able to compete for economic development projects. One is industrial park or city land, or some land that can be privately held by an association, an economic development group or something of that nature, but you have to have industrial park land. With that, you need to have property drawings, you need to have it platted out. However, when I say platted out, you really don't want to file that plat with the recorder. And the reason, I learned this the hard way, you take a map and it's got a 30 acre spot here, a 10 acre spot here, a 50 acre spot here, whatever it may be, and ABC company doesn't need a 30 acre spot, they don't need a 50 acre spot, but they need a 35 or a 40 acre spot. Now, you change it, now you've got to go back to zoning and codes and everybody else to get that all changed around, and you have to replat it, and it's a nightmare. So, what we have learned to do is draw it out, but just don't record it. That way, you can change it at any given point, and all you have to do really then is go back in and have a survey. So, that's why you need the property drawings. You must have a phase one environmental study, it's an absolute must. They might come look at you without it, but it's pretty doubtful. Second thing is you have to have the archaeological studies. Now, I say that they're looking for people my age buried under there, me and the dinosaurs. So, that's what it really is. They're looking for a possibility of Indian burial grounds, dinosaurs, whatever that may be. That has, and that has to be done, it's always going to have to be done anyway, the state of Arizona will require that. Infrastructure incentives. We need to be able to promise them that we're going to fast track all the licensing, planning zoning. Now, that doesn't mean, when I say that, doesn't mean we're going to skip over anything. It just means that we need to make a call and say, "Look, these guys are coming in, and we need to go through, if we have to go through lighting zoning, it's already zoned correctly, we need to do it, and we need to do it now," rather than, and the reason I say that, a lot of places don't meet, except maybe monthly, they may not meet, I've seen them not meet for three months at a time. One community, a long time ago, was six months. So, as you can see, you couldn't do a project because they're not going to, they're not going to work that long, obviously. Installation of utilities. It's important if you can to get the utilities there to the site. It doesn't mean to their site particularly, but it means to the industrial land site. If you can't get them there, you certainly need to have the drawings done. Your utility departments, all of those need to have drawings available to us that say, "It will tell you this is 1,573 feet away, it's going to take us 60 days to get it there." We can get it there 60 days. That's not as, that's not as good as having it to the sight line, but it's better than saying, "Well, I don't know, how long do you think it will take?" "Well, it'll take 45 days, maybe 60." You know, that, you need to have the answers available to them. Now, I will say this, that going on further in, you can utilize community development block grants for that, you can utilize federal economic development funds for that, although that's a little more difficult. But you're only going to be able to utilize those once the project has landed. You can promise it to them and say, "You know, we can do this," but you can't, you can't go in and actually do it. They have to have a project at hand, so you're not going to do that. If you can, it's, it would be great if you could offer a waiver on local sales tax on electric and gas. The state already does that on electric, and it would just be a follow-up to that. That's a, that's a cash incentive to them. And part of the problem is that Cameron does not have cash. You can't, you can't go in and say, "Here's, here's 100 grand to help you defer cost," or "Here's a quarter of a million to help defer cost," or 50,000, whatever the magical number is. We don't have the cash for that. So, this in respect is a cash, cash incentive. And that's forever? Yes. Or, it's negotiable, but, but whatever it's going to be, y'all need to tell me because I need to be able to offer it. And, the word negotiable, you never put negotiable in a prospect, you know, they take it, which would mean that they don't, they just don't like that word negotiable. They will negotiate, but they don't want to see it. So, you've got to be able to offer whatever it may be. No franchise on utilities. Luckily, we don't do that, so it's real easy to offer that. And we will do that. It is important, for example, if you go to St. Joseph, I think the utility franchise over there is, I believe, maybe 5% or 6%. Kent City's 8, some other communities are as high as 13. So, that one you've already got, but we're able to utilize it. Financial incentives, we can obviously always use tax increment financing, but in all honesty, for manufacturing, that really doesn't do very much. Chapter 100 bonds, if you're not familiar with those, those are, they've been popular for quite some time, and they're a lot more popular in the last five years than they've ever been. And this is really what they do. It takes the property tax off of their facility. It also allows them to have property tax waived on their machinery for a certain amount of time. Now, there's all sorts of ways to do that on machinery. You can do it, let's say, five years, 100%, two additional years at 50, you can do five at 100, five at 50, whatever magical number you would come up with, is the number I would have to do, put in front of them. I will tell you that it has got to be extremely competitive today. Now, that, it also will do away with property tax on the buildings. And normally how that runs is that the abatements are designed by the council. I need to know that ahead of time, what variables, like I say, this may be available. But it runs as long as the bonds run. These are act, these are real bonds, and they're bought, they're usually purchased by the company themselves. There's tax advantages for that as well, but that's usually who buys it. So, really how it would work, in most cases, they would, the bank would actually buy, be the one who would buy their banker, unless they're really financially flush, then they would just do it themselves. And I've seen them do that, and they've done that in the past. But it runs for the length of the bonds, which can run 23 years. Once the bonds are paid off, the abatements are gone if they come back. If you don't want, if you don't do 100% abatement, which is what I would suggest for, certainly for margin companies, if you don't, you can either do a smaller percentage, or you can say it stops at 10 years, or whatever. So, those decisions are going to have to be made from the council.
Those would probably depend on who and what.
Who, what size investment? What you really would like, what I would really like to have is a chart, more or less, of saying, hey, following, the following criteria, this, this following type of criteria to get that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't offer 100% payment for 20 years for a company with 118 people, unless you're paying a million dollar salary a year, but, and you want to be fair to your school system as well.
What do you do about accounting?
On, if you do 353, or excuse me, if you do chapter 100 bonds, it's set by law. So, if you issue it, that's the way it works.
The county has to participate?
They'll, they'll come to the hearing, but whoever's the issuer of the bonds. And yes, they will come to the hearing.
Absolutely.
I don't think you can answer my question. Cameron will abate property taxes, does that apply to the county also? It does.
Because specifically under chapter 100 deal, the city actually owns the property.
Yes.
So, there is, cities don't pay property tax because they're a political subdivision of the state of Arizona.
And that's, and that's why the county, although you always want to invite them, you want them to be there, they don't have a lot to say in that respect. Chapter 353 development bonds are basically the same. You don't do too much of that, certainly in the industrial end of it, but you may do it a lot if you want to have a company that's wanting to come in and redevelop, let's just make this up, you've got an old high school and turn it into block apartments. You can do, you can go through 353 redevelopment for that, and it takes off the property tax on the building. One other thing I didn't mention on the chapter 100 is it also allows, it doesn't have to be, it allows the company to abate their sales tax for their building materials. Now, I will tell you how I've proposed it in the past to other communities and other projects, and that is that if it's an industrial project, I don't have any problem saying, "Why don't you do that?" If it's a retail project, I have a real problem telling you to do away with the sales tax on, on building materials for a retail project because the other, the other people end up making their end of it, and you just want to, you know, they've got to have some skin in the game. So, for retail, I always, always do it a little differently, and you can do it differently. Enterprise zone, you presently have an enterprise zone. I would have to say that it's, it's not a very good one. It's a 50% abatement. Everything else is set by statute, so there's no problem by the state. But as far as abatement or taxes for the building, and you can't do machinery on enterprise zones, that's why you utilize the chapter 100 bonds. But on abatement for the building, if it's through the, through the TIF project, or through the enterprise zone, yours is presently at 50%, and I would highly recommend it be 100. Why? Again, y'all don't have the cash, and that helps put you in the, in the same loop as everybody else. Now, you can, which wouldn't necessarily be a bad idea, you can structure that so that you can have X amount of years for a lower number of employee and investment group and a higher percentage for the other. That is, is legal, so. There's a revolving loan grant through the cooperative system, it's a $300,000 loan. To be honest with you, I really probably need to double check that again because it changes considerably as over the years. Last time I checked, which was fairly recently, was $300,000. Now, the difference is that the co-op, whether it would be Plaque Clay or NW Electric, either one could do it, they have to match 20%, so there would be $360,000 in that pot. It's a revolving loan. It says revolving loan and grant because it's part of the grant systems in there on some other stuff. This is a revolving loan. And how that works is that you would loan the company, or you would build yourself, or do something for yourself for them, and they, they have to, let's pretend it's, let's pretend for some reason you helped them build their building, they have to pay that back. And after they pay that back, continually, this is paid back, continually goes into a fund, thus the word revolving, and you continually use that on and on. So, it's a great program, but I can't tell you whether your two cooperatives would do that or not.
They don't have to be in their territory.
Does not, by law, does not have to be, but I would tell you by most, most instances that it would have to be, yes. Because they have, they have the authority to do it or don't do it, because they have to guarantee that, that number. Community, community improvement district, which is called CID, and transportation development districts, which is TDD, those are both sales tax issues that we put on. You can do a self-imposed property tax, it's not very common, but the sales tax, and that certainly works well for you for retail, because the transportation development district, and we're talking about that, presently out at Griffin Road and 36, and 935. You can, you can do upkeep on that, on the, on the roads, you can do lighting, you can do lots of things. You can do the same thing if there were a strip center that wanted to go in up at, up by Walmart, just as an example. That would help pay for parking lot, it would help pay for lighting, street lighting, things of that nature. So, you need to be able to offer those. Those don't cost the city anything, it's a self-imposed tax that they charge their customer.
The business is in that district, just to clarify.
Business is in that district, not, not the city as a whole, just the business in that district to sign off on that, that's correct. Visit incentives. We need to pick up the cost of deals with presentations when they come in. We need to cover the cost of hotel motel rooms during their visit, if they need that. Let's skip the next one, I'll come back to you. We need a welcome package for the site selector. So, let's say that it's the state, KCDC, and they're here, you need to give them a little package as well as the client. We need to pick up those costs also for, for those folks. And we need a professionally produced package, which would be right up for Cameron. I have that package. We would have to obviously customize it for Cameron. It's expensive to do the first time, and when I say expensive, I mean it's not thousands of dollars, but it's expensive to do the first time, and then thereafter, it's, it's a lot cheaper because they, they utilize a vast majority. You don't even take so many pictures of the pool, so many pictures of the park, hospital and all that. But then the other stuff where you do the incentive packages, utility rates and all that stuff, that's all customized. So, those, those parts change. If a company comes in and they require it, you need to be able to do a, a workfare. And I really try to discourage them from doing that because number one, it's expensive if you do it right. And right means you advertise in a lot of the papers, including in here, you'd be advertising St. Joe, which includes all the surrounding area papers, you'd be on the radio stations. It's a, it's a tough, tough thing to put on, number one. But the real reason that I try to discourage it is, it's discouraging to people if they come in and they go through a workfare like that, and then they don't, they don't come. So, then you have another one that comes in.
Put that on before they're nailed in.
Yeah, because they're going to say, "I want to make sure that you have labor involved." And so, then you have, then you have to do another one for somebody else that comes in. Then some of those people are not going to go. You do that about three times, and you're, it's going to be you and the company sitting there waiting for people to come in because they're not going to. So, I, I always try to discourage that if I can, because it's just, like I said, it's, it can be a bigger problem than if you nail. But we have a labor study that we had conducted by Fort H State, and they're the best at what they do. We have that labor study, which shows like 99.9% of the prospects would buy that labor study. I mean, they would, they would agree to that and use that for their information. The only ones that would want the other is if you had an exorbitant amount of labor that you had, you had to account for, 1,000 people or something, so. But other than that, our labor study, which is excellent, would suffice for that. And then, just like the visitation package, we have a management package, which we would like to see included, which is nothing with the city per se, well, there's one of the issues, but we would want to see a wide membership for a year for management people, it would be free. Usually say four to five, or three to five, depending on what size company, or maybe even just one, depending, one or two, depending on the size of the company. Same with the golf club membership for a year, same with the aquatic center. And we would like to see the hotels, motels, obviously give us a, a better rate, corporate rate. And what that really is for, because we want to, we really want them to compensate them when they're visiting, but what that is for is if a management comes in, and they're going to be here a month, while the building, the building at the end of the month, or wherever it may be, we would like to have a decent rate for them, either $125 a night rate or something like that. Those are the ones that are of the, of the biggest importance to us. On the last page, you'll see some additional, we put them there just so that you know whether the communities are offering. Obviously, there are spec buildings, there's financial incentives, which is economic development fund usually, and they usually offer low-cost interest loans, closing fund loans, closing fund, meaning that you may pay the closing cost on equipment. You may hand them $100,000, whatever, whatever it takes to close the deal, that's what the closing costs are. And then management packages, things which are moving expenses, and some of them have been reduced home, home rates and loans for their houses. That's, the incentive pattern, the moving package is relatively common, and what you can do is that you, you can put all that stuff together, such as your hotel, or your, excuse me, your Y and your pool, and your golf course and all that, and you can put in X amount of dollars, if you have dollars, you put X amount of dollars in to actually help them move. $2,500 bucks a year, $2,500 for your management person to, to help him defray some cost. Sometimes they take it, sometimes they don't do it. A big part of the big companies, they just pay the moving costs and go on. I can tell you the big companies though also say, "Fine, you give us the moving costs, we'll move them." So, they're just deducting their, their costs from, or deducting from their costs, so one way or the other, it's, it's, uh, there was one other one back here under the visit incentives, something I would come back to, pay for private flight if necessary. It's used on two or three different types of deals and used extremely rare, I mean, it's just a rare, rare instance that you would do that, but I've done it. And if you have a company, if you're closing the deal, not, not a first business or anything like that, but if you're closing the deal and you think, you're pretty, pretty sure it's going to happen, you, and they say, "We want you to come up to me with the board." Well, you've got to get up there, you know? Now, if it's St. Joe, it's no problem to drive, but if it's Minneapolis or New York or somewhere, you either have a private plane or you have a flight.
You don't like to drive.
Pardon?
You don't like to drive.
I'm not that crazy about it, no. I do 60,000 miles a year anyway, that's, I don't have a whole driving I want. But it's not used very often. Same thing can happen, however, and that's happened is with existing business. Case New Hol, uh, New Holland's, let's say that they, they have a major issue and they want to talk to you up there. They're going to request that probably the mayor, somebody can up and, and visit with them and get the issue resolved. Or maybe they call you because they don't want to talk to you on the phone, they don't want to come in, and they'll bring you up there because they're going to expand their, their facility. I've had both ways on that, on that end of it. But, you know, those aren't cheap. The difference is you're up, you're back and you're done, rather than up, staying, renting a car or staying again and flying back. So, those are the incentives that we would ask the council to consider and let me know, and sort of sit down again with the mayor, Mark, if anybody else, obviously, to find out which one of these, or which ones of these you want to do. I can tell you the biggest bulk that you see under possible incentives. I can tell you the biggest bulk that you see under possible incentives, down to where it says other ideas. Those all need, I need to be able to respond. So I need, I need numbers and I need yeses or no's.
And you wanna be able to put limits on there like, we'll do this if you have this many jobs or cost this much?
Yeah, I, I think if you're, for example, if you're going to do, uh, chapter one hundred bonds, um, you would wanna, um, you'd wanna set the, the minimum that you'll do them for. Or you can do it for any number of, it doesn't make any sense for a project to do chapter one hundred, honestly, until they get a million dollars minimum investment. The cost of the bonds, which they're responsible for, the cost of the bonds, uh, are up to them. As was stated, the, the city actually owns those bonds, or doesn't own the bonds, they own the, the equipment. And, um, at the end of, when those bonds are paid off, you hand them that, a little sale basically, and they get it at that time.
They usually give you a dollar.
Yeah.
It's usually about a dollar will be the-
Seems like it's going up to ten now.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen ten in a couple as well.
Getting a little carried away there. But saying that there is no obligation upon the city for payment of the bonds. They are totally not, not obligated. Bonds are run through, it's just a pass-through basically, it runs through the city, and by the fact that the city owns it, at that time owns those bonds, that's what takes the property tax off. But it's still up to you all to decide what percentage you wanna take off.
Another factor is the wage rate or the wage.
Yeah, I wouldn't, if, if they're not paying average county wage, they really shouldn't be getting very many incentives. Some they get automatically, but, uh, they need to pay the, the average county wage or above.
So do you have some examples of these sliding scales for the chugging guidelines that we as council could work over?
Sure, I can get that to you, Mayor.
Oh, just give us some basic ideas of what our communities do as far as-
Sure. They, they almost always started a minimum fifty percent. Don't know if I've ever seen one less than that.
But that was good, like us to learn to kinda compare other towns and something to look at besides Blue Sky.
Certainly will.
A moderately common structure for the chapter one hundred is like ten years, hundred percent, fifteen years, seventy-five percent. A lot of cities have adopted a policy which, I mean, the policy's still, you know, you can always go back and change it. We have some communities we represent that have, you know, hard five million dollar cap, if it's not five million dollars or more. There's no point because of the cost of issuance, it makes it essentially impossible. Gilmore Valley's gonna get there, it's gonna flood, that deal, so.
Up front first.
Well, back end, in the bonds, so the city doesn't feel it, but the developer does and that's-
Developer pays it. Uh, we did, we did actually, I will say this, I just issued, I just did one in, uh, Colville County for, I mean, green property. And, uh, theirs was less than two, but they wanted to do it. We were able to get by without them having an attorney. We just used Gilmore Valley all day, because it was simple cut and dried. And it was worth it to them. And we did one when I brought in the window company as well, it was like a million, million and a half. But as a whole, you wanna be in the multiple submitting.
We're just negotiate and start and stop. And you get a list of these incentives, and you have to buy most of them on the original request. But somewhere down the line, alive, isn't there some, you can take, uh-
Well, that's, the biggest part is gonna be really what the council decides they wanna do. Because once you say, once you tell them, uh, you can word it where you can say up to, um, you know, it's kinda like buying a car. You buy it as little as, and there are albums cars, which you buy as little as that somewhere. Uh, so you might say, we can, we can offer it up to depending upon, and, and I've, I've said that on numerous occasions, depending upon capital investment and numbers of jobs and wages, so. But as far as, once you get to a certain point, there's really a negotiation, they're gonna take you at that, that number, they're always gonna try and get you the big one. If it's, if it's a legitimate company, they're big enough to do that. If it were a small company, you, you would start out on the low end, so, you know, you could go up to fifty percent or hundred percent for, I've, I've done a couple of- Hundred percent for five years, even, that's on the equipment. Equipment devalues pretty quickly anyways, you know? Only been a couple of businesses I've ever done where it's a hundred percent all the way through, and that was for a massive investment, so.
State got any new programs on, seems like they've been doing a lot of stuff on.
Well, they've got, they have, you know, that's on top, this is on top of what the state offers, of course. They have, um, they have the enterprise zone benefits that they do, and they have two or three others. They do some training funds, uh, they take your numbers and their skill sets, they work with, with the company on that, and then they, and the final package will come from the state, which is always irritating. I can tell you that when I started in this, Jack Bridge and I used to sit and write our own packages, and, uh, without any problem at all, you can still sit and write your own packages, except now they decided they wanna nickel diamond and, and, uh, so you have to, and they write it out, and you have to back correct, and say, now we need more, we need more training money than this.
Have you ever done a study to find out the percentage of companies that leave at the end of their initiative, or incentive, excuse me? Cause I've, I've been reading a lot about incentives, I love incentives. I think this is the way to get people here. But I've also been reading a lot where people are, or the companies are leaving, they're getting their twenty years, their thirty years, and they're walking because someone else down the road is offering a, a new incentive and more, and it goes back to your analogy of sports teams. It's a perfect example, you know, San Diego didn't get their, so they just went ahead and went up to LA.
Well, that's the reason why it's important to keep an ongoing dialogue with, like a case New Holland, so that we continue to keep them happy, so that they don't wanna look for, for pressure.
But the other part is, and I understand what you're saying, and can I tell you that that never happens? Absolutely not, it has happened.
I'm just looking for like a percentage.
But I don't, to my knowledge, there's no, no study that's been done on that, because I will tell you, the company will tell you, they're not good because of that. But I can also say that the, the percentage of that happening is extremely low, and here's the reason why. As much as those incentives are, it's never going to be as much as it is, or I can, I'll take it back, never say no. Sell them will it ever amount to dollars it takes them to actually move, um, and retrain people. Retrain people, you take, you take a manufacturing plant, and saying that, they'll pack up and move next year. Because there's a huge, they can make that up real quick between paying ten, eleven, fifteen dollars an hour than paying, uh, dollars to thirty cents. And I've been on the short end of that state. But as far as, as far as the companies running it out, it's basically, it's a rarity. I mean, it's a, it's a true rarity, it's just too expensive for them to do that.
But we're gonna have to have a similar type meeting like we're having right now with the county commissioners, to see what they're willing to do, you know? Cause they're gonna be employers in some of these.
That's correct.
So.
The county says their enterprise zone.
So what new alternatives have, have you come up with? Cause one thing I know is Cameron isn't bringing in a whole lot of business. We're a rural community, we were told that at best we have a five percent chance of bringing in business because we're so small. So what are some new and unique alternatives? These are, everybody's got these, so if someone's got everything, you know, and we're comparing to somebody else and they've got a few more people available, little greener pasture, whatever. What new, and I, uh, I, I guess I'm just looking for any new, unique ways of structuring or whatever with the finance. What can, what can we offer?
Well, one thing, Councilman, not everybody has this, you don't. And that's why we're asking for it.
But you're saying this would just get us up to even par if we do these, right? I mean, essentially, these are what everybody else has, we have to get them-
Not, not everybody, but this is what your comp- this is what your competition-
The competition that are getting the business.
And this is gonna have it, whether it be here or whether it be in the state of Michigan.
Right, and so I'm saying what else, what else can we do? I mean, we've got some really smart people in this room, there's gotta be more than just a single, same old that we can throw. I'm not saying don't do this, I'm saying what can we do in addition?
Well, you do have location, and that's probably your biggest asset, is your location.
And as some people would say, it's also a big detriment. I, I mean, I'm just, I, I'm not saying that it's not great location, but Ronnie and I have talked about that before. The best and the worst thing is the location. It's one of those where it kinda goes back, you know, we're right here, but yet we're right here.
As far as, as far as trying to come up with new deals, every project I do, I customize. There are people who don't, there are people who just say, here, here, you can cut our list, here it is. I look at the project, find out what they, what their needs are. If they've got some kind of a unique need, we try to find a way to fill it. And that's what we do. But if you're asking me, are there another page of ideas? This covers about everything that there is, that I know of, that a company is looking for. And, um, short of, and you are short of it, that's why, that's why some of these need to be changed, such as your enterprise zone, how much you offer on chapter one hundreds. If I were Kansas City, I wouldn't be able to offer, well, I would before, but I wouldn't be able to offer a hundred percent maintenance on machinery and all that. They would, they would have that cut down. St. Joseph used to be cut down, now it's back up, it's up at the top. So, um, I guess the best answer to that is, it depends on what they're, what, they may have a unique need. For example, we had, um, we had a company called Saka. It's not a company called Saka, it was a project called Saka. And, um, they were Japanese, they had, they had Japanese requests. I, I, I've been dealing for two years now with a project, and a community that is Korean. They had the Korean request, so we have to put together things that, for example, this kinda sounds crazy, that one of their requ- well, the Japanese and, uh, and the Korean. Can your grocery stores put in a section of Japanese or Korean food? So you have, you have, say, oh, let me see, and you go talk to them, some will, some won't. I know that's kinda odd, example, but that is, that's an example of what-
Is that, is that assuming that they're gonna have deputies Korean workers, a lot of them?
Management. Well, and they may have fifteen, they, they may have, a company brings in, uh, a hundred people, and they may bring in fifteen, twenty. Especially with the Japanese, more than the Koreans. They will bring in people for six months and take them back out, bring another load in for six months, take them back out, or a year, whatever the magical number is.
Joe has that type of problem when he's recruiting physicians, because he'll have some, because they wanna be in an ethnic type.
Another example, and that was with the Japanese folks, they wanted the school to be able to teach a Saturday class, special Saturday class, in Japanese, because they didn't want their workers' children to lose the language.
Well, those are definitely the things that I'm talking about from a unique perspective.
But each one of those comes about depending upon the company.
Oh, no.
If this were, if this were Case New Holland, there's probably not an item on one of the two pages that wouldn't be covered.
But why wouldn't, if Case New Holland's coming in, why wouldn't we just say, as one of the incentives, we will only buy Case New Holland equipment from them?
That's not, that's not out of the ordinary.
Right, okay.
I can't remember the state Alabama, I wanna say it is, somebody here may know that, has the Mercedes Benz plant, their, their city drives Mercedes Benz. I think they give the mayor a car.
I think another thing too, I mean, what we're talking about here is kinda financial driven, um, per se. I mean, it's something that you can actually put your hand on and put there. The quality of life issue is a huge issue. We hear that all the time from our existing businesses, between the school, the hospital, Case New Holland, uh, Cameron Insurance Companies. Those companies that move here, their top executives don't feel like that they wanna live in Cameron, so they're living outside. So because of quality of life, whether it be, um, just your, whatever, your park system or this system or your school system or whatever, uh, or housing per se. So the, the better quality of standard of living that you have within your community only entices those good companies to actually take a better look at your community. You, you can always go back and, you, you can push money at anything, and you can sit down with a piece of paper and a pencil and you can figure money. But you can't, you can't put a dollar amount on, on, on quality of life, there's no way. So that's something that only builds.
Yeah, maybe different way of saying quality of life is just the culture of your community.
Well, quality of life, I mean, it's maybe even more than the culture. It's so exciting, but, um, I, I just spoke yesterday, I had a long conversation with a friend of mine, in fact, I use him. And, uh, they're the largest private, um, grant writers in all Northwest Missouri. And, uh, we were talking about different things, because he's writing greatest CDVG grants for companies and things of that nature. Usually, uh, in this situation, Moken would write it, or, uh, I don't know what, what they charge you guys, I don't know what your rates are. In other areas, it would be Green Hills or other parts of states and other regional planning officials and. And we were talking about it, and they had just closed on a trail. And they were commenting of, of the absolute, which I know, the absolute importance of having trails in your community. It's not a wish list anymore, it's a have to list. And, uh, so that's quality of life issue. If you go down, down the line, anything you can think of, is in those numbers, they're looking at it. The, I, I, there's three major things, and I found this out, I was doing this for a long, several years. And the guy, nobody, no one ever explained this to me. And I had most of it, but I, I didn't have them in the right order, and I didn't have one of them included at all. When a co- when a major company comes to town, they look for three major things. They look, number one, the obvious, your educational system, they wanna have a solid education system. Number two, they want the best parks available. And I, and I said, other than just being a nice park, why is that? Quote, I'll never forget this, if a community takes care of the parks and provides for the kids, that's enough, that's, that's the community we wanna be in because they're making things priorities and they know what they are. Third, which had the same explanation, but kinda shocked me, was the quality of your churches. Because they said that the churches will support themselves and keep themselves up, the community will do the same. And I have since asked that question repeatedly, and I almost get the same answer. Sometimes the one I may come in fourth, but almost always they're right, and those are the three top, education's always first, culture always second. Sometimes the church and something else may fluctuate backwards.
And that education goes a little farther, it could be the, uh, community college or-
Could be.
Something like that, but at least close, if they're in the town.
We did a, uh, this kinda threw me off, we did a, um, you know, state, uh, they used to go to the- We did a, uh, this kinda threw me off, we did a, um, you know, state, uh, they used to go to, like, five communities in the state of Missouri. And they would send you, you know, just like you had a prospect, just like, just like the state sends me a project. And it's a fake project, we know it's a fake project. And they, they bring in an out-of-state site consultant, and they, that person is supposed to be the company. And they, they fix up their list, so I mean, the list I got was just massive. And, uh, they put all that, that stuff down there, but it was always education. But in St. Joe, when they did it, and they had a big company, they had a very large company that ended up coming in doing theirs. I mean, state picked it, they just happened to be a large company. They, uh, they faulted St. Joseph heavily on their education. And I thought, why would they do that? I, I know the schools are pretty decent. I know they've got some challenges, but all schools do, they've got Mo West, which is Austin, Hilliers. They faulted a major because they didn't have a community college. Even though they had, uh, Missouri Western, they didn't have a community college. And that's where the biggest bulk of your job training, on-job training stuff, comes from is our community colleges. For example, around here, you would utilize Trenton, it's a whole orbit down Metro Kansas City, or somewhere like that, Maple Woods, uh, something like that. But I mean, it, it was a huge deduct, at St. Joe, because they didn't have a community college. Although they had a four, a four-year universe, usually, it's usually asked the other way around.
I think the big thing that we're needing from the council is probably the chart for a list, um, of incentives that when we get requests.
And we need to have that ASAP, because when those projects come in right now, I'm just flying by a C I D. So I don't, I don't know if I can bring them back to get it or not. The last thing you ever wanna do is prompt something, bring it back to the community and turn it down. And that would advance very quickly.
The big thing you have today that you didn't have is something to sell.
Yep.
You probably have one of the primest pieces of property of anywhere to be able to sell for something, uh, for additional development purposes. Put that down.
Yeah, uh, up until this point, we just kept pushing our location, encouraging our location, and so now we actually have.
Or we would try to find them, come on, I'm not gonna spend many days trying to find them.
Right, or we would go building to building, and talk to landowners, and try to work on individual negotiations and things like that. So, now we have a chunk of land that can be mortgaged and.
We told the story, didn't we, about discussing it with a landowner and price went up.
Mark and I, we had a project, and a good project, and, uh, prices land, Mark called, got him on the phone, and, uh, he, uh, he said, yeah, I've got it for sale, and I think it was.
It was ten, and then when we told him we did a prospect, it turned into twenty.
On the phone.
So for council to make a decision on, is it easy to, is it a plan, is it?
Depends on what the plan is, like a TIF, you need to set up a redevelopment plan, go through the, the requirements of ninety-nine, six-eight-five.
Well, they can actually amend it.
Yeah, well, you can always amend the plan later, but for a specific project, you do the redevelopment plan, then you set up the phases, then they have ten years to implement the phases. Then each time a phase gets activated, they come back and the city says, you know, passes an ordinance, phase two is activated, phase one is activated. Then ten years, if they're not activated, it goes away. For a CID, it's actually done by a petition of property owners that they send to the city, city council approves it. Most of the time, that's just kind of a, the city just kinda writes off, some cities want the, because the, a CID is its own political subdivision of the state of Missouri. So they have their own board that kinda directs them, but the city in the petition will usually have a say, like, you know, we want one person on the board, we want a voice on the board. You know, you can go in and say, we want specifically for CIDs, for them to use the funds, it has to either be a public improvement, or you need to have a blank determination, so that also goes along with the city. Uh, for a TDD, the city's named in the petition for a TDD if, to the Transportation Development Authority, but that goes, that goes to court. Like, the court actually approves a TDD, which that's why you're seeing TDDs kind of peter off, because that's much more expensive than just asking the city council to approve it, going to a court requires, you know, attorneys showing up at court, which is never cheap.
On both of those, it says here that there's a one percent sales tax on that district, does that stay in the, in the district since the, so it doesn't come to the city?
Well, with a TDD, they can expend money outside the district if it's related to the district. For a CID, it stays strictly in the district, and most of the time, you can see with the CID, is, this is an example that I'm working on right now. They say, we wanna do one point seven million dollars of public improvements, you say, all right, so the CDD, all that. They issue bonds, usually ten or fifteen years, and then they pay back the bonds with the one percent sales tax that's developed within the district. And then that TDD kind of.
And does that fall off at a certain point, or does it just stay on?
It'll keep, it'll keep going as long as the CID's, you know, active, the one percent sales tax. And the thing is, is we actually, in that negotiation, um, people tend to not realize, because people don't look at their sales tax as much as they do like a property tax. You notice when somebody looks at property tax, when there's another one percent sales tax at the bottom of your receipt from Price Chopper, you just usually crumple up that receipt and put it in your pocket and don't look at it. So that one percent, that company had a problem, because they were like, whoa, you know, that'll draw people away from our, our shopping center, I'll go to shopping center X. But in this area, and essentially the entire state of Missouri, there's no developments done without a CID in place, so. That's usually, like, for, just so everybody knows, right now, chapter one hundred bonds and CIDs are really the two incentives that are, that use the most. TIFs, you have problems with school districts saying, you're taking all of our money, because the school district mainly just gets stuff from property tax. With a TIF, a hundred percent of the tax increment for the property tax is captured. So, school districts come in and say, no, Kansas City actually now limits the amount, seventy-five percent of that.
They are, they are paying the, the A and L.
Yeah, they do, they can have a pile, sometimes, because that comes into the, because you have the redevelopment plan, but then most of the time, you have an economic development agreement between the city, or any other relevant parties, and the developer. And that'll kinda come into play there, where it's like, okay, you're getting a hundred percent tax increment financing on the property tax here. We want some of that to be used, specifically not just for redevelopment costs, but, you know, give some of it to the school through something.
But even like the CID where, or the TDD, where you can use it outside the development district. It can only be used at the blessings of the, of the, of that group, otherwise, the city can't go say, well, I think I wanna fix up the alley down here, just take it. On the, on the CID, um, they can do things with it even, even as far as, uh, snow removal, things of that nature, where they, as long as the city working on behalf of the, uh, of the development.
So it doesn't increase our tax base, it just adds a tax in at, for that district, for them to use.
For public improvements.
For public improvements.
Yeah, only within the district.
I think Carney did that, I'm certain of their Price Chopper, that whole section right there.
I think that's a TIF and a CID, yeah, because that's, that's common too, sorry.
Okay, on the CID, let's say it's an additional one percent sales tax. But the city is already, Carney in that case, is already carving off their normal percent. So if their normal tax was eight, it's gone to nine. Do they still keep the, the, their original rate?
Yes.
Okay, so if that happens, and then there's a huge increase in volume, like, the grocery store that used to be that went out of Carney, and then Price Chopper came in. I mean, they're printing money down there, that parking lot is full. So it's, so while you give up that one percent, you still keep what you. I mean, you, right, it's an additional tax, you still, the citizens would benefit from that.
The city still gets their percentage, what they always had.
Plus the additional volume that might be created.
The city doesn't get that, but the CID district gets that. Which would include the, the grocery store and the developer, couldn't be just the developer.
My shopper brings in all people in Cameron, the shop down there that they didn't before, that's what you're talking about, the additional traffic.
Well, that, and I can, I can look at the parking lot and can see what used to be the grocery store that was on that side, the west side of, of thirty-five, was never, um, had the kind of traffic that what we're seeing in Price Chopper. So, the groceries that are being bought in Carney right now.
So they're picking up, they're picking up additional.
Has to have spiked.
Absolutely.
Uh, compared to what it was.
Absolutely.
In spite of the additional.
Now, you know, for example, the TIF, um, should be, I've seen communities mess up big time and not do that. But they would do, uh, for example, let's say that Walmart wanted to move, and they, they wanted to do a TIF district. Well, you would cap that TIF district at what they were presently doing, where they are now. So, let's just make it up late, they do forty million dollars. The first forty million dollars in their sales, there's none of that goes to the TIF district. It's everything, it's, and that's why it's called tax increment, it's the new increment that would go on. So, they really wouldn't get as much benefit. I've seen communities mess up and just say, okay, fine, we'll just do, but all of a sudden, now they, they lost, the city's lost their, their past, because of the, the whole thing's gone.
It's also important with TIFs, because TIFs give, while they're more expensive, they give cities kind of more negotiating power and setting up, just because there's way more money at play in a TIF than in any of the other ones, uh, listed. Is that the economic agreement that you enter into can really, it can really, it can really benefit a city. But you always have to, still have to find a developer willing to enter into this.
Well, and I'm going from memory, but when the city did the TIF with Walmart out there, Walmart went from where Sutherland was, Sutherland's came in and filled that, they go out there, their volume shot way up. And then, because of that, they also pulled in Sears and Cameron Lumber, and a series of other things. So, I'm thinking that thing paid off ahead of time.
It did, way ahead of time. Orson's doing well too, so.
Yeah, it's the, TIF has become like a dirty word, almost in, in sense. And they, but they really do, if you get a good TIF with good stuff in there, I mean, they, they pay off much faster than you, than people anticipate. I mean, if it's a good enough TIF, the staple even, granted, they came up with a clever TIF, a super TIF. They could've come up with something a little bit better than that, but they'll grant a super TIF, give them a hundred percent of the sales tax, tax increment.
On those financial incentives, tax increment financing, chapter one hundred bonds, industrial revenue bonds, and enterprise zone. My firm, we either wrote, or involved in the passage of all of those, those issues. So, I'm a little bit familiar with them, and you're right, if you, if you do the right, the right TIF. And I changed the TIF considerably since, since we originally wrote it, but, uh, still, principles are still all the same. The other, I mean, every one of those are tools that are needed, um, some more for retail, but, um, the others are definitely, definitely needed for the industrial development, I should say, or business development.
We could try to work on some sort of a draft, not try, we could work on some sort of a draft plan, an E B policy for council to look at. And if there are things in there that you think, you know, we need to tweak, we can do that. But we can just come up with a, a wish list of incentives, give you something to look at, and the comparisons chart, go that route if that.
That's what I would recommend is, maybe we get together and sit down and say, okay, there's something that works.
Yeah, we started a base policy a while back, and, uh, this would maybe incorporate that same thing, it might, maybe it'll all work as one, one document.
One thing on the TIF that I've heard time and time again is, our current situation is not the easiest to deal with. As far as dealing with the attorney, is there a local attorney that we could get for something like that, or?
We probably use, uh, Campo for future TIFs, not that, I, I didn't have, I don't have an issue with our TIF attorney, nobody else did either, one person has, but.
Well, no, I mean, not like, just people looking into it complaining about the difficulties of putting it together. And I am just the cost, it's, you know, all the labor that they were doing, and maybe having issues with working with the attorney, like a city director.
There's a lot to it, it's, um, it's not.
The TIF is the most complex of the financing tools, just because of the amount that TIF gives back to the developer. So when you have like those extra steps and processes, they're in place, one, to protect the citizens, just because you don't wanna, you know, get into a bad TIF with a hundred percent tax increment financing and fifty percent sales tax, and then something goes wrong, and that's not there, so.
Well, it sounds like if we're working with your, like, maybe you'd have better looking future as well.
Yeah, I, I'm here, but if, you know, any, any of this progressed, it'd go to my, my boss, Chris, he's, I think, almost Liberty, that was, you know, he was the economic development for, he was their attorney, Lee Summit, Casey Kaye. So, he, he's, he has a really good understanding of this, actually.
There's really two attorneys involved, uh, in most, most cases. Honestly, in Cameron's situation, there's three, because the requirement is that they go to the TIF attorney to represent, actually go to, to, to represent the city, and there's a fee involved there. Most communities, that's not the case, most communities, the city attorney represents the city and looks over. The developer has his attorney who has to present to the city and get the passage. But when you had, I can never, I should never, oh, yeah. There was a, there was a sizable fee there to, to have her guide through it. And if they had their own attorney, now they've got two fees, because their attorneys, the development attorney and attorney as well, so. That may be kinda weird, some weird.
I'm just trying to be polite and not get into it. I just told you the issue without.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, there's a ton of stuff, people just think you can go out and get a TIF, you just can't go out and get a TIF. I mean, it has to, there's three categories, the biggest one, easiest one is blight, and that's gotta be more difficult as time goes on.
We've been waiting for that for a while, to, but man, blight, determination, it has to be coming at some point, you can blight anything at this point.
St. Louis has abused that.
Totally.
Totally.
Totally, totally.
And that's what's gonna hurt, they're gonna make everybody mad.
Well, that's what, that's what's caused the problem all along, is they're mad already. And the forecast, if the business was gonna go there anyway. Yeah. You tipped them, you just lost tax money. But you don't, it's, it's. It's how you wanna roll those dice. I have, I have seen them say, okay, fine, yeah, adios. Well, and somebody had mentioned, it's a little different, it's the first thing, it was, you can't, somebody went twenty-four miles or wherever, Kansas City, Kansas, Kansas, Shawnee area, there was a grocery store, big grocery store, I believe, I think it was Walmart that was the grocery store. Could've been Walmart, I don't know.
Oh, Walmart in Liberty went over to Kansas City, Missouri, or, you know, just went across I thirty-five.
Yeah, for some reason. But the, the other one, all they said was, we, we want the building to do the following, that, that's, we got you, we're not gonna go, and they said, okay. And they went literally across the street. That was it.
Not that this is gonna happen, but, you know, there's a good concern about our state stadium, or even the Chiefs, and they're talking about, there's all kinds of chatter on the radio the other day about moving over into Kansas. Not that that's gonna happen, but.
I wouldn't mind the Johnson County taxpayers having to pay that instead of me for once.
There you go.
You're only gonna create Kansas, you guys.
Yeah.
But it's competitive, I guess that's what it is, it's not straightforward, it's, you are, you are recruiting, just like, it's, it's a recruitment process, it's competitive, it's. Well, it's competitive, I guess that's what it is, it's not straightforward, it's, you are, you are recruiting, just like, it's, it's a recruitment process, it's competitive, it's, we're selling ourselves, so.
Trying to assign daddy daffy.
It, it, they don't, as Terry has mentioned before, they're looking for reasons not to come, not for reasons to come, so they drive in and pick up our newspaper, or they drive in and we have street lights out, which we don't, we have a great light, but they don't, anything that we have, we're constantly, I mean, they, it's the culture, the feel of our community, the reception. And if I really wanted to do my business here, how receptive would the professional, the school district, the city council, and the workers, how would they perceive, would they welcome us?
And when we do the site visits, we try and get the best.
Track them down.
Yeah, track them down, so that they see the best, best side of it.
We've got a creative route, with my family.
Cause they look for you, they don't want to see what's over here.
We have literally asked, and the poets, did you notice this, as we drive by certain spots in town, trying to get them not to look out the other window, so. It's not just, it's just not the look though, it is, it is the friendliness, it's the, it's the professionalism, it's the education level, it's the.
There are projects that are lost in the newspaper. I have committed these, our, our conducting businesses, and it's amazing, the companies that look either through themselves or through a straw party, usually through a straw party, will take local newspaper to follow them.
We're all very passionate about Cameron, and we think it's the best, but they have multiple cameras to choose from, so, and they're not loyal to us, like we are loyal to ourselves, so. We want them to become loyal to us. Any other questions for Terry? Or I guess we'll ask Mark and Terry to get together and put together a chart, and then, and we can, or a list chart that would be applicable and responsible for our size, and what we can strategically offer, and then bring that back to you, mayor, and, does that sound fair? Bring it back to the council.
Yeah, the more detailed the better, because I'm gonna be asking a lot more questions if you don't, that's just, that's just me, I gotta know. So any, any extra details you can think of to throw in there, size, money, whatever, would be very appreciated.
And we haven't had too good a luck of getting county commissioners up here, so, you know, a couple of us may need to go down there and knock on their door, get in their background.
My guy said before, I started on one of these boards, so I probably won't be going with you.
But you, you haven't been to any meetings, have you?
I haven't, I don't plan on the road, so.
Well, I've talked to Larry, at least from the Clinton County side, and he's, he's pretty much on board with bringing something, matter of fact, he would love to see something come in on the Clinton County side, so.
And I think the captain's got a little proud of himself, that everything was handed to him, you know.
Exactly, yeah.
Look, they need to get him to help us pay for our ACAD CDs.
Abortion.
This committee ground is actually in Caldwell and Clinton County, so we can also go to Caldwell now, and, and chat, have a chat with Caldwell County as well.
Due to the complexity of this and the unintended consequences, I mean, this is, this is complicated stuff. I'd like to request a recommendation, if it's alright, if they go through and say, you know, we recommend this, or something like that, something that points us, doesn't mean we have to take it, but something that gives us some direction, cause at least for me, it's complicated enough that there'll be unintended consequences that I don't understand unless somebody's there guiding us.
Well, there are consequences. You've cost somebody, don't you, or you've cost the project.
I can safely assume that whatever you guys bring back to us would be the recommendation, not for us anyway.
And I'll request a little extra time to be able to go through the recommendation, just, just for myself.
Oh, absolutely, no, I wouldn't expect you to.
I know, we all received it at the same time.
They'd have time to put it together.
Right, right.
But I mean, everybody, all council members receive it at the same time.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you think that, I'm just thinking, would, instead of like maybe taking your incentive package that you put together, your charts and graphs and all that kinda thing, instead of taking it to a council meeting to discuss it, to come back in a work session? And, and honestly, beans, we're all in this group together, to bring that, that, that information back to a group, our group.
I think it needs to go to council first, and then take it to you.
Well, I'm booking that from the standpoint, instead of discuss, because there's so much discussion that goes on in a, you know, council meeting, I'm not trying to take it away from you, that's all I'm saying is, instead of discussing it, bring it back into a work session like we've done today, where we can actually sit and discuss it. What you all decide is up to you, but at least it's discussed, because with all of us, all of our heads together, I mean, what I might see and you might see may be the same or not, but what I, you may say, may say, oh, yeah, maybe, maybe you are right, but maybe we need to look at this also. So it only makes a document better when you have more eyes looking across it, is all I'm saying.
Well, this can't be discussed in a closed session, so it's, you know, sometimes it isn't always, I don't know, attract people really well, whereas it's a lot easier versus a TIF like this, and you don't want to discuss it.
Well, you know what? And I kinda like your idea, and I think that that probably would be, get them to put something together, let's all sit down and look, but then let's go into an executive session, because if it's out in the open, then any company that wants to can go, okay, well, let's just look at the, you know, that's it, we're just gonna skip that, without even having an opportunity to have that discussion. So that would be, cause I think that, yeah, I, I think, I think it's a good idea, cause there's definitely some different ideas and.
As long as it meets a closed meeting.
If, if it was, if it was couched as like legal advice to the city for implementation of these projects, then I think it could go into a closed session. Obviously, it would still become open record at some point. Yeah, there's no, there's no closed, permanently real requirement, everything becomes in an open record usually at some point, there's usually a time limit, so.
Well, once we went through and got rid of stuff or whatever, you know, it would be our recommendation that it sounds, you know, which of course at some point would be open record anyway.
Yeah, cause at some point you give it to the developer.
And there are parts of this that the city will have nothing to say about. There's no reason for it to, for example, the city's not gonna pick up the cost of breakfast, you know, that would have come from another group, or it may be, so, those parts wouldn't be. These are just, these were just the settings that are, that are done day in, day out. So on, on the final list, those that are not applicable, the city wouldn't be on. Yeah, I wouldn't see why you would bother yourself with those.
But somebody has to take responsibility and pick them up.
Yeah.
Whoever that might be, so that goes back to.
But like, city didn't care, reduce to a terrible rates, but they're gonna care about the chapter one hundred bonds.
But that's still something to me, that this group is a buy-in to the whole project, so that's something this group all needs to, to, to decide upon, you know, that, I mean, somebody may say that O'Donnell Motor Company's gonna take the responsibility of paying for the hotel rooms.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
We were discussing that the other day, and one of our dudes was gonna get that, so.
But you know what I mean, I mean, everybody has a buy-in, so it, it puts that, puts everything down on paper, so we don't walk out of here and one person forgot something, and another one thought of it a different way, and it gets it all down, it's all, everybody's on the same page.
So you have a city list, and then you have a reservation list.
And I'm gonna think, like, EDOC list, that's what I'm thinking.
We got pretty creative, the last, few times we've hosted people, we've gotten pretty creative on how to get things covered.
As long as you make the cookies.
And most of that from, just, most of that from the EDOC list that she's talking about's all been financed through our pockets, not through the EDOC money, through our pockets.
I don't, I don't, you know, I'm just, the only emphasis that I would like to make to you, mayor, and to the council, and that is, you need to go through these, but I need to have, I need to have yes and no's.
We need a, we need a list.
Yeah, and here's the parameters, here's the parameters. The city says, Terry, here's the parameters that you can work in, call for the chapter one hundred bonds, how many employees we want, whatever it may be, and then, so that when I fill that out, I can.
How long do you and Mark want, do you, a month, two months, how long, I don't know your schedule, especially Mark, you know, who's busy, but, when, when can we meet again, I guess, I don't remember.
At least sixty minutes. Chiefs are, the Chiefs are done playing.
Could we say, I, could we?
A little weeks is over, eh?
Plan on meeting the second, I don't know what the second council meeting in March looks like, that would be two months, do a little four o'clock meeting, the second council meeting in March.
Tim definitely looked at that and said.
Yeah, I'll leave that up to you.
Do you have a twenty?
The Vito Ward is a birthday?
Panito Ward, yes, it is. Man, I tell you what, he should be selling Mexico.
I think he tried to steal my stuff, and his birthday is working.
Yes, it is.
That's a tentative date there, and I'll leave that up to Mark and Terry at that.
That's more than enough time, March twenty.
March twentieth, four P M, right here. Well, if we don't have anything else, anybody have anything else, I think we'll adjourn, and so six o'clock for the, and then the council now.